Looks like we've got some grass growing at the, uh, library.
Library.
In patches.
I know.
Terrible. Looks terrible.
Why would that be splotchy like?
Cause he put that's how I spread the seed.
Because they.
Oh, where they had it real heavy.
Mm-hmm.
Mike told him that.
Ah, that's right.
Mike's gonna rescue us. Why did we go with Mike in the beginning?
Well, we were.
Lawn rescue?
They didn't want to.
Cause they didn't want to do it.
And they wanted to turn that down.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
They didn't get no recommendation from us doing it.
Exactly.
And he was a dick.
I guess the greens. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Monday, September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five Cascade City Council meeting. We'll have a call to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Oliver, here. Weber.
Here.
Hush.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Delaney.
Here.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Oliver.
Second.
Second by Hush. All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
This point we'll have public comment, limit of three minutes per person on agenda items and local government issues. Seeing no one, we'll go to consent agenda. City council minutes, nine-eight-twenty-five Cascade Park Board minutes, nine-fifteen-twenty-five Cascade Economic Development Corporation minutes, eight-twenty-twenty-five Cascade Municipal Utilities Board minutes, nine-ten-twenty-five Visa invoice in the amount of twelve-hundred thirty-seven dollars and seven cents. Liquor license and ownership update for downtown or pub at two-thirty-three First Avenue West. September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five claims. Is there any questions on the consent agenda? If none, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Weber.
I'll second it.
Second by Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, consideration to approve resolution number ninety-five dash twenty-five, resolution approving pay application number one for the Buchanan Street storm and sanitary repair project. Did this all go well?
Yeah.
No problems?
Not, not.
None?
Yeah.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Delaney.
I'll second it.
Second by Oliver. Roll call.
Oliver.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Hush.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Delaney.
Aye.
Number eight, consideration to approve resolution number ninety-six dash twenty-five, resolution approving pay application number sixteen, final retainage for the Cascade Public Library project.
Um, on the lawn, um, I spoke to Mike Galeigan today about the grass. And he is suggesting that he bring in his spiker and cedar and go through the areas where the grass, um, is not growing because it just wasn't, they just didn't want to do the job and they did a
marginal.
A good job and, um, because it's getting plenty of water. It's just the grass seed needs to be spread out throughout the, um, area better, so.
More even?
Yeah.
Does that have mesh in it, the straw?
Yeah, it's got a netting, so.
So that's gonna pose a problem.
Well, he said he's gonna have to pull it up and do what he needs to do and then lay it all back down.
And do we have any recourse at all?
Not really. I mean, because, um, it's in our contract, in the contract with Garland and they basically did what was in the contract, so.
Yeah, no.
I mean, going forward, I think when we're doing some of these bigger projects, we need to make sure that there's better information regarding the seeding after the project's finished.
So that if he takes up all the mesh, is he gonna have to remulch it then too?
I don't, I don't know about that. He just said he would have to pull the netting. I don't know if you'll ha, what he'll have to exactly do. But he said he will take care of it and make sure that it gets done properly and have a good finished product.
Don't we retain the final payment for a year?
I mean, we can try that. I've been pushing it off, um. Because.
What is the final payment?
It, it's this ten thousand that we're, that's on this agenda or this resolution. Um, according to them, they have met all the specifications in the contract for the seeding. Even coming back and doing what they did, they went up and above.
In their opinion?
Your opinion.
In their opinion?
Well, exactly, in their opinion, but it, it didn't really spell out a lot in the contract about the seeding, so. Cause I, I had numerous conversations with the engineer and she, they weren't very helpful either.
Yeah, I mean, if it just says seeding in there and they throw seeding out in that and it doesn't say, you know, contingent on growth and, you know, certain specs in there, I mean, it's gonna be a lot you're gonna do about it. I mean, I think it's a learning curve that we definitely need to, all projects in the future, put down and maybe even talk to.
Have lo, have locals do the seeding.
Yeah. Well, yeah, because, uh, cause the other thing, they care more.
It's the last thing they wanna do, come back.
Is come back.
Is pillor around with that.
Is there such a thing that Mike could recommend spray seeding with the mulch? That you have the mulch with it? I mean, he doesn't do that.
The hydro seeding?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it's gonna.
I mean, if Mike does it, it, it'll be done right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure, without a doubt, yeah.
I think either way, work good. I mean, seeding works good, but so's the other way, so.
And there's probably enough growth coming if they go and spike, take the net, I, off.
It should work.
Go and spike it in, it'll come. But it says we have a warranty on the project for a year to cover any issues that arise.
Right.
So I assume next spring, by next spring, or.
Yeah, um, I don't remember exactly.
When, when was it, March?
February, Mar, January, somewhere in there, when we substantially, the project was substantially completed.
I mean, does it make sense to withhold the final payment, just?
I would say probably.
I mean, it's not gonna.
I don't think they're gonna come back.
Oh, no, they're, they're not. No.
What's the warranty part? And has it warranty from three weeks ago when they, um, or is it the warranty on?
Probably on the project.
On our first, on our acceptance in March, or?
It should be on when we subs, uh, when the project was substantially completed and we accepted the project at that point. That should, the year should have started that, which I don't remember if it was March, February, somewhere in there.
I mean, do we see if, within the next couple of weeks, if, um, if the grass isn't growing substantially in some areas that we I mean, if. We ask, we ask them to, um, use the warranty that's kind of, there's bare spots.
If it, well, no, it appears like it's, it has way too much in spots.
In certain spots.
It's not, it's not that they didn't seed it properly. They have way too much in spots.
It's not, it wasn't seeded evenly.
And it's only, the last time I drove by, it's just coming up, so I think we just need to wait it out a little bit. And see what it looks like.
But we do have a warranty if we can.
Yeah, but I'm sure they didn't just, this spot, that spot, this spot. They did the whole thing. They just did whatever they were putting down with it, just blew out right there, blew out right here. So I'm sure.
And it did.
So what, so do we release the final payment, but we still have the warranty we could fall back on, correct?
Right, right.
Oh, well then, should be good. If that's the case, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to release the final payment.
Motion by Oliver.
Second.
Second by Hush. Roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Hush.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Delaney.
Aye.
Oliver.
Aye.
Number nine, consideration to approve resolution number ninety-seven dash twenty-five, a resolution approving a quote to overlay Tyler Street southeast, south of Fifth Avenue southeast.
Uh, before opening up any bids, um, if everybody's had an opportunity to go up there, it's a mess.
Up to Tyler Street?
Yeah.
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 But I'm not so sure that, Mark, were you, were you part of the planning, I mean, were you part of the planning for that? I mean, obviously no curb and gutter at all.
Right.
So how are they?
Never had curb and gutter.
I know.
So now they're gonna blacktop right up to their concrete, so you don't need a curb and gutter.
And then that'll be pitched towards the rest of the street.
Well, it'll go right down where the curb and gutter would be.
Yeah.
Chances are it's gonna undercut that.
No, it's asphalt versus seal coat. No. And when it was first done, it was seal coated.
Right.
Right down the street. It wasn't seal coated up to the concrete.
Yeah.
And that's where you, that's where it's all breaking out.
That's where it all.
Yeah. I mean, there's grass, there's, there's grass stretches, there's about three, four, at least three grass stretches in there. That there's gonna be water running down.
That should be.
Between driveways.
They're bringing it all the way to the concrete. The concrete goes all the way along there.
Yeah.
So they're buttoning new asphalt up to the concrete.
Do you want the picture?
Yeah, right there. See this concrete comes all the way down here? Yeah, here is what you're talking about, there, there, in there?
Grass areas.
Yeah, that's.
So any of the water that's generated will be pitched out onto the street?
Yeah. No, what, what, what happened, so when they seal coated the first time, they just seal coated this. These were left gravel.
That was rock, yeah.
And then I think between now and then, it looks like they, they must have seal coated some more or something. I don't know.
They did at one point. They went in and did some more.
Too far behind. So it won't hold.
I guess I'm wondering why, why we're missing out on opportunity to curb and gutter and do it proper the way we do every other street.
There's no curb and gutter on, um.
On the east side.
There's very little, very few streets.
Via, um, across from Corner Tap. In the Den parking stalls. There's no curb and gutter there.
Hmm.
Where?
Corner Tap. That's street, Buchanan Street, right?
Mm-hmm.
There's no curb and gutter all the way along there, or in the Den parking stalls.
Well, they have the pulling ones.
Yeah, but there's no grass areas either.
So you're thinking, you're thinking there's gonna be an issue coming off the grass under the top.
I just know, I'm in my shop after the alley, very simple, wherever, now I've got water, um, as, after it gets past my, my one overhead door, first overhead door there, it's cutting in at least eight or ten inches.
It comes from behind Ross Ors building?
Well, it comes down the street.
Yeah.
Comes down. While that's gravel, that'll retain a certain amount of it, but.
But Mark, this'll be.
So then we're gonna curb and gutter that, then?
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying it's an example of what happens when you, when you go ahead and put a, a crown on it and you have all that water running down through there. It's just gonna sit there and start cutting into the.
No, it's a to, total different surface versus asphalt versus seal coat. Soon as you get a little puddle of.
I mean, it's asphalt and back mine.
I mean.
I'm just saying, it's.
Do you, do, this is a, this is a inexpensive fix versus if you go and curb and gutter it for forty-two dollars a foot or whatever. Do we want to spend that money?
How do we usually do it?
We don't assess anything anymore.
Since when?
We haven't, when was the last time we did an assessment?
It would've been up on Dillon Street.
How many years ago was that? A long time ago.
Dillon was probably seven or eight.
Oh.
Yes, before I was here.
What, Dillon?
Now it was probably eight years, yeah.
That little stretch that they.
Herbie, Herbie Dolphin stretch?
The one by John.
Uh, where you come down that new street where we opened up up there.
By Johnny Trumps.
You assess that to the property owners?
No. The city paid them.
The city paid that?
Yeah.
We haven't assessed.
We haven't assessed yet. I bet you.
Yeah, the city paid for that stretch.
I remember something about assessments there.
It was broad, oh.
It would've been assessed to one person there.
Yeah.
Cause that's curb and guttered up there, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did talk about it, but then.
It never happened.
No.
Deanna, was a, was there any assessments here with the last time you were?
We did not assess any streets while I was here.
I don't think there was.
It's been, uh, what street, whatever street then lives on.
Been a long time.
That was probably the last time.
Yeah.
That's the only time I can remember.
Yeah.
Anything about assessing. I couldn't remember. I, I know what we, we talked about went through, but I thought that got assessed.
So curb and gutter is no longer gonna be used in the town? Is that what they're trying to?
No, there's, there's, no, this is, this is a two-inch overlay. It's to fix the potholes that are there. It's not.
One puddle, there's probably about six or eight inch.
I, I looked at it. I know what it is.
So that will keep the water between where you're overlaying the gravel and what's coming off the road. It'll, it'll go towards that.
Yeah, it's gonna go down the same spot.
Yeah.
It's just gonna be a different surface.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we can look at curb and gutter and it and see what.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we're moving money from one project here to do another, to do, to fix a problem that we have now versus overlaying a street that should be overlaid, but we don't think it's bad enough. So we're moving it over to there. To fix something we have potholes in. Washouts in it.
I know McKinley Street, they continually talk about curb and gutter that, and it's always a deal of assessment up there at the cemetery, in those ones at the back of it, it'd be assessed. I mean, that's.
They may have assessed that, and I'm not sure.
Well, no, I know. I think they did. I think they did like with Bart Couter and Kurt Miller. When that was done, part of that was done, probably ten years ago. But the, but the cemetery.
Yeah.
You know, they're always talking about doing that. And some of that flows into the backyard suddenly, on the house behind, and it's a little controversial because if you curb and gutter that, then all that water runs down
Domain Street.
Down the streets.
Yeah.
And there, there's no collection basins up there at all. So it's.
Yeah, we had done that little stretch on McKinley going up the hill along the cemetery. That had been done.
Yeah.
Where, on Dick Copus's side?
By, um, Roush's. Yeah, up to Dick Copus's. It did, they did it up to that first street, Second Avenue.
What, the other side of the street? That's not me.
Yeah. Any other concerns?
So we're, uh, we're stopping the Second Avenue Northwest project short from Harrison to Arthur so we can get this other project done?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. And we're still, still doing the court as part of that project?
Oh, yes.
So that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, obviously, but Phil, when you looked at it, I mean, it's, it still needs us.
Yeah.
Attention, but, you know, it's not as bad as the other one, but it's still still isn't good.
Is everybody in agreement then?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm not, but I, I'm not sure why we wouldn't do an assessment, at least on the one side where all the water originates from.
Well, you can't do one side, not the other side.
Well, the other side basically just has a garage there and, and basically all those driveways pour a lot of water into the, into the street. If there's a crown on it at all, it's gonna go down that, that side. And that's basically where that.
Majority of that water's coming down from up by the school.
I don't think so. The way it looks to me, like, it's most of it's being caught and going off into the side streets, according to my way I look at it.
Okay. I did, I didn't look at it that close, but it's been a problem since they put them in there, so. If we had sealed coated up to the, or they would've concreted out to the property line where whatever, it wouldn't be an issue.
I'm just afraid we're gonna be back five years from now if we're doing something.
We have two bids on Tyler Street. The first one is from Kleesner Construction in the amount of twenty thousand, ten dollars. The other's from River City Paving in the amount of nineteen thousand, sixty dollars. So River City would be the low bid. If there's no questions, I need a motion.
Is that being built up with gravel or what cause, are we? Right now, I mean, you got a ditch running down through there.
Yeah.
Is that, get excavated out and some gravel put in there or what's, I mean, to get a base?
We would, we would fill it with asphalt and then asphalt over it, but.
I'm just.
That's, but.
I didn't know I was bid.
Yeah.
For a two-inch overlay is the way it's bid.
No other questions? I need a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion by Delaney.
I'll second it.
Second by Oliver. Roll call.
Hush.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Delaney.
Aye.
Oliver.
Aye.
Weber.
I'm staying.
Reports, Fred?
Um, I don't have anything.
Nothing?
You have nothing? Don't we have an issue up at the school?
Well, DM and I are working on that.
Well, working on it and everybody saying something about it on Facebook and this and that, and we need to let the community know that there's something being done.
Yeah, we're working on it. I actually sat up there in the alley, um, earlier this afternoon and at school zone time today.
What, is the issue when the car's in the middle lane?
Yeah, from, from what I saw.
Cause we have three lanes going down our streets, our main street?
Uh, here's an example. Um, as I was sitting up there this afternoon, lady hit the, uh, yellow light and stepped out into the curb. There was a truck, oh, ninety percent halfway through the intersection. She expected he was gonna stop. He was calling a trailer. There's no way the guy was gonna stop.
Mm-hmm.
He couldn't.
I, I can.
That's part of the problem. I've seen it two or three times when I'm up there. So people expect they hit that light, but we've also got a guy that, uh, will walk along during the day, hit the light, stay on the same side of the road, walk down the block and see if anybody's gonna stop there. So he's kinda desensitizing people.
Yeah, I, I actually ran into that individual twice and I was probably when he hit the light, the first time I was going through the thing there, I was probably like five feet from it, so the light popped on. And it was just about to make me hit my brakes, go through, and I'm like looking to see where the kids are coming from, and it's just him.
Tripping the light.
Tripping the light and walking down the road. And so then you kinda go through it, and the next time I was further down, so I obviously was able to come up, but then I just watched him, he just kept on walking down the sidewalk going through there.
Just to see how people react.
Yeah, see if they'll stop. And if there's nobody in the crosswalk, you don't have to stop.
Okay, that, that is, that was my question is, what is the rules with those lights?
If there's nobody there, you don't have to stop. It's, it's basically a warning, like, hey.
Yeah, it's not a stoplight.
But can we, can we, like, I know Worthington's a smaller town, but they got a, when they had a school there, they had a stop sign there. And you see that at other schools.
You see it all.
You know.
Years, years ago when it was a four lane, Randy Lansing bought.
They have them.
And I saw, I was sitting where Dagwood's old building was there. Of course, there were four lanes of traffic then. A bus pulled up, and it was by Harrison Street there.
Yeah.
A bus pulled up, stopping to go up to the school. A kid started going across the crosswalk. Car went around him on the right, cause he did not see that stop sign.
That was probably what we had with the four lane.
Yeah.
We're, we're kinda working on something now so that, you know, granted, we've got three lanes. Um, we're hoping to get some stop signs out with flashers on them or something, temporary to see how they work. Another option would be, it's gonna be an expensive option. I don't know if we can even do it. Um, move the stoplights down to Harrison Street because you've got a couple, a couple, you've got a, an extra block each way.
Yep.
That you're gonna see more, more of a straight-on view from that.
And we have also, everybody picking their kids up, that intersection is too congested.
It's busy.
You got everybody turn, down Harrison Street, there's only one way to turn.
Yep.
It's way less, that's where it always was. I don't know when it ever got moved. When I was a kid, that's where it was.
Yeah, I think when the lights went in, there was maybe a couple of years before the lights went in, they moved it from Harrison Street up to Tyler Street.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense to be down on Harrison Street.
How will that go with dismissal though? Because they dismiss.
That's the problem.
They dismiss on the west side of the building?
Yeah, the west side of the building.
What, I think what they could do, we'd have to talk to the school, but the kids that are getting picked up dismiss on that side. The kids that are walking home, they just get dismissed on the other side.
They still come out the east side and then come up the sidewalk and use that.
No, they, they all, they all come out the west side now.
Okay.
Tyler Street.
Mm-hmm.
So if they split them, that's gonna cause a lot less congestion.
The ones that walk go out this way, the ones that get picked up go out this way.
Didn't we used to have cones that we would put out there at, uh?
Well, they, they weren't ours. The school bought them, and then they would forget to take them in at night and they would get run over.
They didn't last long.
Oh, shoot, okay.
They got run over and.
And then you've got semis that are turning, well, they're coming up Tyler Street, and you've got, they're turning down. And they need to turn wide and they would always take the cone out and crush it.
But I just think we need to get the two split up, the cars and pedestrians.
Well, I mean.
And coming up around the, I've done it.
Yeah.
Not, I mean, I haven't been in town in a long time, but I've done it. I've come up around the corner, you daydream and you come up, cause you come around this corner, then it's kinda, you have another corner, so.
Yeah, I know early in the morning, I'll sit up there, a lot of times right in the parking lot or in the alley, and you get people coming up the hill and you know they're daydreaming, they're underway to work, or they haven't had their first cup of coffee completed yet or whatever, and they're just, yeah, they're just. They're just not paying attention, so.
No, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no.
Somebody out there in the community knows that we're.
Yeah, Deanna and I talked about some different options this morning. We're kinda looking to a few things, and it's like, I honestly don't know what the best would be that's gonna resolve it. We're gonna try a couple of things before we have to go to the expensive moving lights.
They're, they're, the expense is minor versus somebody getting hit.
So here, here's another thought, uh, and I, I know we probably got turning traffic, and I know it might be if you're on the side, if, if you were to park right in the middle lane, right when, uh, traffic's going, you know, during that time. I just wondering, like, if you pulled this squad car right in that lane, turn on the lights.
Problem is, if we're busy doing something, we have to take off after somebody, even when we're not there.
I'm just trying to give, like, this is that, like, kinda thing.
And another thing is, I'm not blaming anyone, but just like you said, just cause you hit that light, doesn't mean you can walk out there.
I think people think that.
I mean, I work around traffic every day. All of our people, we, we're, everybody's looking out for everyone. So on that point, one person isn't enough people out there for taking them kids across the road.
No.
Cause you have to have eyes both directions, and you can't.
And I, I have noticed this year, the, when the crossing guard goes out, they do have a new stop sign that the stop actually, once they get out there, they must grip onto it or hold it, and it'll actually illuminate the stop.
But when that car pulls in that center lane.
Yeah.
That illumination does nothing.
No.
Cause you don't see it.
You're not paying attention.
And, and can we, can we change them flashing lights to red?
I had to ask that last year.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's gonna make people stop or not, cause then it's just a red flashing light.
Then that's when you come into play. That's a stop sign.
Yeah, that you go from yellow to red.
It's gonna cost money, but you put the yellow flashers down here on each end and a red, where you're supposed to stop.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't know if we can do that. I don't know if we can do that or not.
Why can't we?
I don't know. I, maybe the company doesn't even make anything like that. I don't know.
I don't know. I, um, left a message today for the company that did those, cause I have questions on those, so hopefully they'll get back to me tomorrow and I can answer some of these questions that we have about if we could change the lights to red or.
See what's available.
Yeah.
Are we, and are we bringing in, I, I'm blanking on the principal's name up there.
Oh, Wendler.
Windler, are we bringing Windler into these conversations with the two of you?
Well, we just started talking about it.
Yeah, we just started talking about it this morning, I heard about it this week, yeah.
Came out this week, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And there, there again? Call City Hall if you have complaints, don't put it on Facebook.
That's, yeah.
Just like the restrooms at the park and a few other things, call City Hall.
Call the police department, let us know.
Don't put it on Facebook and think we know about it.
Good point. Thanks, Fred.
Yep.
Oh, Fred, sorry, is, is there any update on the hiring of a new officer?
Um, we got three applications, and we had a person turn in a resume, didn't sound like he really wanted to fill out an application. And, um, kind of looking at the resume, um, he has a pattern of, uh, September and August, usually gets hired in September, and by the next August, he's looking for another job, so, since he didn't fill out an application, we're just kind of putting that by, that one by the wayside. The other three, yeah, we've got to sit down with the personnel committee, and, I mean, all three are certified, so.
That's good.
Yeah, it'll save a little bit of expense, but, but again, you had Dubuque County's having an issue, they're not getting applications, um, Monticello, I believe, just hired one, Anamosa just hired one, but they're also looking for a police chief, so they're putting that out, and I think they're gonna hire another, well, Vernon is, is looking at this time, too.
Farley is too.
Farley is too? Okay, so. Yeah, for a while, it was, uh, we joke around, the Highway Twenty corridor, every agency along there is looking for police officers, now it's Highway one fifty-one, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. Thank you. I get your turn.
Okay. Update from River City, um, they plan to move the plant. Project the first or second week in October, um, they plan to do Riverview Road first, then move to the city projects, and, um, once we have a better timeline, we can kind of decide what streets we want or where we want them to start, and then, once we know that, we will be doing door hangers, so everybody that's actually affected by the projects will know. We are continuing to work on our software conversion, um, our go-live with our financials is set for the week of December first through the fifth, and then, the payroll software will be running it parallel with our current system and the new system, to make sure there's no issues, and then our go-live with payroll is, um, then on January fifth. The new hosted Business Solution phone system will be occurring in the near future, um, during reviewing all this, I did find a couple of things that we can eliminate to save us a little money on our, um, cascade communications bill, and then we're looking at, um, getting rid of AT&T, who has been our long-distance carrier, because we can get it through Cascade Communications. The pool hopefully will be, will be repainted this week, um, they've been running a couple of weeks behind. I had MSA put together a watershed map, which you guys had in your packets. And then I'll be reviewing methods of calculating stormwater fees, um, based on a previous area. Going, starting soon here, CM and I will be working on all of our annual reports that we have due December first, so that when it gets crazy with our software conversion, we don't have to worry about doing reports as well. We'll be planning to flush hydrants again this fall, but we'll wait as late as we can with the weather, you know, based on the weather. Public Works moved the junk dirt from the yard waste site, and I reached out to Jay at Miller Logging again to see when they plan to come grind the yard waste pile, and he plans on doing it on the way to an upcoming project, um, so that we don't get charged mobilization fees, and then, he's, right now, he's thinking mid to late October. And then, the park board approved purchasing two ADA accessible picnic tables, um, one which will go at the Riverview Park, and one for the Shade Pavilion that's being planned at Oak Hill Park. And then, right now, we have a Oak Hill Park survey out to see what the community wants for more amenities at that park.
He talked about no mobilization, we, that wasn't in his bid?
It wasn't, it wasn't, but that's, I think that's why he bid it that way, cause he knew he had this upcoming other project in the area, so.
That's something you need to.
Tell them, come on, get it ground up, because?
Yeah.
Everybody's getting, thinking it's the landfill now, so.
Are we gonna be able to make use of the blacktop millings for some alleys?
Yes, yep, we discussed that when we had our pre-construction.
Where are you gonna store them?
Um, I don't, we had talked about, there's a couple alleys that needed a couple spots, and then, um? What else?
But, there's gonna be quite a few.
Yeah.
But where are we gonna store them?
Store them?
Yeah, cause you're not gonna have enough.
Alleys to get rid of them.
Alleyways to get ready to put that down, to prep, to.
Uh, I don't know, we'll, we'll discuss it and figure it out.
Like, the parking lot over here.
Yeah, we could.
The lower one, just put them in a pile down there and.
And then we need to have somebody available to do the final shaping.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I got a plan.
Hopefully.
In regards to the watershed map, I noticed that one, um, retention basin isn't listed on that. The one in back of the laundromat.
The little green one?
Yeah.
Oh, that, where it's small.
The Austro Street southeast, where the southeast is right adjacent to that, there's a basin there that's not.
Over here.
And I assume that.
In that little corner.
That would take? Most of that on the south side of First Avenue East. You know where the, where our water? Well, it is, etc.
Right there.
If there's nothing else for the veteran of the community, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Hush.
Snug it.
Second by Weber, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.